At this time, I'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask for Councilman Cabo to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd ask Chief Curran to please lead us in prayer. Chief?
Today, February 6th, we remember the birthday of our 40th President Ronald Reagan, a president called a voice for every generation. In his words, we make this prayer: "Dream that we will travel the road ahead with Liberty's lamp guiding our steps and Opportunity's arms steadying our way. To remember always those who serve us in the military. We will always be proud, always be prepared, so that we may always be free. That we resolve, all young Americans will always find there is a city of hope in a country that is free, and let us resolve that they will say our generation did keep our faith with our God. We did act worthy of ourselves, and that we did protect and pass on lovingly that shining city on a hill." In closing, America needs God more than God needs America. If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, we will be a nation no longer. Tonight, we pray that God sends His wisdom on us as we do the people's business. Amen.
Chief? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon, Nagashet, Johnson, Trombetta, Caladino, Perkins, Visconti, Chinise, Estizito, Sadi, Cabo, Rotello, Diggs, Taiso, Arcanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, Seaberry, Stanley.
There being 21 present and zero absent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I'd ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda. You also must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city to address the council. And I'd ask a couple of housekeeping things so we can keep things moving. We appreciate it if you didn't applaud, because that just slows the process down, and we only have 30 minutes, and we don't want to try to get as many people up as we can that want to address the council. So if you applaud, it just slows things down. And try to be as direct and concise to the point as you can. We're going to start first to ask anybody who wants to address the council about any item, with the exception of item 29, which is ICE access. I know there's a lot of people who want to talk about that, but there's just a few people about another item, so we'll have them come up first and move things along. And try to get just one person to speak if there's a particular issue. So, Mr. Brooks, your hand was up.
I've come before you to speak about item 13, which is the petition to cease the project on Cannondale Drive, followed by the survey vote, which was six negative, one positive. The negatives being six against continuing the Cannondale Drive project. These decisions were agonizing and not taken lightly. I understand the council didn't understand that people thought very deeply before they turned down a project, which some of us have worked 15 years on, some of us three and a half years on. It's a tragedy that it had to turn out this way, and it's not the venue to discuss why it happened. At the last minute, I became aware there's a letter which is improperly before you that is inaccurate. I hope that won't sway you. We have a clear majority, about 85, 87 percent, who had to vote against continuing the project. There were a number of factors, and if the council wants to ask me why they can, but please just take our vote for what it is that we had to make the decision to turn down further work on the project. It was not taken lightly, I have to say that, and it's very sad for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Also, please give your name and address for the record when you come up to speak. Anybody want to speak about an item, with the exception of the ICE access program? Is there any other business in here that's not related to ICE access? Sir?
I don't know, you started off with saying, "Have to be Danbury resident." I'm not. I was born in Danbury.
Are you a taxpayer, sir?
Huh?
Are you a taxpayer?
No, but I'm representing St. James Church.
I can't let you speak, I'm sorry. Got to be a taxpayer and/or resident. Thank you, though. And you're welcome to contact the council after the meeting for any concerns you might have. Any other item besides ICE access?
I'd be very brief. I actually wanted to talk on two things. The first one was item number 26, the two acres of land. It's kind of misleading in the minutes here. It says acquisition of the two acres on Rockville. It's actually a sale. I find it kind of unusual that we just went through an open space bond to try to get the 6.6 million for open space, but yet here we are going to sell off two acres of land as opposed to acquiring more land, which is what I thought our goal was in this city. In this neighborhood, we also have three other parcels that are also owned by the city. This parcel is on the beginning of 150, 200 acre of all open land. So I find it kind of unusual that we are selling off this land rather than acquiring land in that area. Also, that the price that we're selling it at, $20,000 for two acres of land in Danbury seems a little bit outrageous, especially considering that we just spent $200,000 for 2.9 acres off of Terrywild. So I am against this. I am for open space. I feel that we should be buying open space rather than selling. My second thing that I wanted to talk on, I don't know if I could do it now, was on the ICE access.
We're going to open it back up, Ken, but if we can get to you, we will.
I can come back up?
If we can get to you, we will. Okay? We have a lot of people that want to speak on that. Anybody else want to speak about any other item besides ICE access? Mrs. Brooks, I think we got the Brooks family set on Cannondale. I think we know where you're coming from. Okay. Is Mr. Legardo on the agenda tonight relating? Okay, okay. Okay, Mrs. Brooks. This is in relation to what item on the agenda? Okay.
Just for the record, when Ed Legardo is not familiar with the common council procedures because he is not a resident of Danbury, however, when the six homeowners abutting Cannondale Drive petitioned the common council to start the road improvement project, Ed Legardo was the warden of St. James Episcopal Church, and he represents... What's... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know the procedure. And he represents two Cannondale Drive, so Marjorie Brook for Cannondale Drive. So if you feel that it is appropriate to him to speak, I would appreciate letting him speak. Thank you.
Okay, that was a stretch. Ivan, anything about ICE access? We're going to get to that in a second. Okay.
Good evening. I've announced a mid to Midfield Road, item number 24. I'm here to ax all of you, to support the film festival in Danbury. This is great for downtown Danbury. It's a great initiative. It will bring businesses downtown. It is economically sound for Danbury. Please support that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. With that, we're going to move to... Anybody who wants to address the ICE access program, that pretty much will cover the rest of the stuff. Remember, you have to be a resident and taxpayer. If you already spoke at one of the first two meetings, we'd appreciate if you wait to the end, because we want to let other people who maybe have an opinion on this issue be able to address the council. So ma'am, your hands all the way up in the back with the glass. Come on up. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Renata Amaral, 221 Main Street in Danbury. I'll be very brief. One of the things that I wanted to discuss tonight is basically what I have already written to all the council members, which is to really think hard before you cast your vote. I received several responses already, and I appreciate you taking the time to reply to my efforts. And one of the things that caught my attention was when some of the council members said, "We'll do what's best for Danbury." Well, we are Danbury. All these people that are gathered here today, we become part of the bulk of people that pay taxes and that add to the business and to the culture of Danbury. We're not all criminals. We'd like you to take consideration and respect for the 21 years that I have been a taxpayer in Danbury, for consideration for all the people that do not break the laws or they are desperately, desperately trying to become documentized in the state of Connecticut. I further like to say, again, we are Danbury. We are part of the culture and the diversity that is here. I can't imagine my business being anywhere else, and I don't want to be forced to take it elsewhere. I believe I'm speaking for most of the people here today. I don't want to have Danbury lose any more revenue than it will, because if we lose our businesses, Danbury will suffer. Thank you.
The gentleman in the red baseball hat, come on forward. And then pastor, pastor, you'll be next, okay? Just name and address for the record.
Good evening. Julio Cantal, 19 Longcrest Road in Danbury. I'd like to address the council tonight. I emailed the council a few times also, trying to explain what's the hardship of the approval of this law at this moment. I'm a real estate broker. I lived in Danbury for 15 years, and already have seen many, many properties vacant at this point. And we're going to see a lot more properties vacant if that law being approved tonight. So I plead and ask the council to have a really, really good thinking about this law, because that's going to affect, it's not only affected directly, but psychologically affect all the members of this community. Not only the illegal immigrants that are here that this law intend to affect, but it's going to affect the other citizens or residents of this town. So I plead and ask the council to rethink about this, rethink about the properties that are going to be vacant in the near future, and the economy of this town, which is, it's our town. We love this town. Thank you.
Pastor?
Good evening. My name is Ophir de Barros. I'm the pastor from the Oldest Baptist Church in 234 Main Street.
Just your address, sir, pastor.
1 Buckskin Heights Drive, Danbury. My point here is that we have created a very great unrest in the city, a climate of fear that I'm feeling my congregation and all the community. And my point that we have to do something very objective and clear, and you are responsible for the city, as mayor and selectmen, members of the council, you need to do something to calm the people, to bring peace and justice, as we have done in the pledge of allegiance, justice and liberty and equality for all. And my point, my proposal was for you that do immediately constitute a community, a commission, something like that, group that can study why we are coming to this point, and we can do a social covenant to wait for the reform of immigration, that certainly we'll come with the next president of the United States of America, if you hope that. And while this is happening, perhaps one year more, or Holy Potter, two years, then we must stay as we are. We not have to create a climate of rest and doing every measure like this. So my proposal to you, my suggestion, my quest, is that you hold this law or wait this all, together with the law, add some clear status or items in the agenda or the law, that we can really walk together, city and all the residents, all people who are here, to bring social justice, to be a climate of peace to the city. If we continue on this problem, this will create a very difficult situation for us to live here. So I am asking you as a pastor, as a racial person, and the Bible tells us that God says that you do not oppress the alien person, the foreigner, who are in your land. Leviticus, chapter 19. And my prayer to God and my request to you is this: Let's do some objective steps. What you can do to solve this problem that was created by you with this law. I know that we need to take care of the criminals, of the gangs, of the frauds, everything that the law is correct in this perspective. But the problem is not the law in his objectively, but what is under the law, the climate, understanding the fear. If you signal to all the people of the community, "We want to do a social covenant, and all people who are under community can wait and live here peacefully until the reform is done," this is the best thing that you can do. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, right there, your hand up in the glass. Yes.
Common Council, I'm Patricia Weiner, and I live at 150 Brushy Hill Road in Danbury. The people that you are planning to hound out of their homes come to Danbury, come to this country, to work hard, to earn a living, to support their families, because they are having trouble supporting their families in their own countries. Because the farmers in countries like Mexico cannot earn a living, because our government is subsidizing our farmers, and they cannot compete with our farmers, because we have violated the NAFTA agreement. So we are doing one wrong upon another wrong in order to achieve what? I'm not quite sure. What we are achieving is fear. And I know about that, because I grew up in South Africa, where people were doing exactly what you want to do in this country, in this town, where the police came and hounded people out of their homes and sent them back to where the government thought they ought to be living, because they didn't think they ought to be living in the place where they came to earn a living. And it created a terrible atmosphere. People couldn't speak to other people. People were afraid. People were living in constant fear. Not only the people who were afraid of the police, but the other people also. I was not subject to that, because I was a white person in South Africa, but I was afraid also, and everybody in this town will be affected. We will all be affected economically also, because the immigrants in this town creates a huge advantage to the economy of this town. And if we lose our immigrant population, we will lose the character of Danbury, and we will lose our economic base. And I think you ought to think very carefully about that. And I think one last thing that you have to think about is, you have to think about how very, very lucky every one of us is who is here legally, and who is born in this country, and who hasn't had to face the problems that these people are facing. And that is only because you were lucky enough to be born here. And you have to think about if you weren't that lucky, and if you were born in a country where you could not support your family, you would probably be doing exactly the same thing. So don't prevent that from these people. Thank you.
Folks, as I told you, if you continue to applaud, less people are going to have an opportunity to speak, and I think people have things they want to say. So we need to keep the program moving. Amelia?
Ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board, and Mr. Mayabank, thank you for giving me the chance. I'm Emily Furnance from 16 Deal Drive. I own Furnance Food Store for 33 years. I've been a taxpayer in Danbury for all this time and live here for 45. I have two beautiful big boys, which everybody knows and I'm sure like me. And we love all of you. And I have some apartments on Killa Street, Liberty Street, and Austin Street. And at this time, everybody left. I have eight empty apartments. I don't know how I'm going to pay the mortgage, tax, and everything else. And I have to give all the money back. I have $2,000 in the bank to pay mortgage, tax, and all of that, and heat, because I pay the heat. I cannot shut the heat off for the rest of the tenants at 42 Killa Street. So I really appreciate if we can touch your hearts, and God bless you all. And we'll all love you, and we love Danbury. That's the reason we stay here forever. And I hope I have five grandchildren, which they all be here, I hope, with all this help. And God bless you. Have a nice evening, and we all love you.
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mark Barton, and all the group there from the Common Council in Danbury. My name is Luis Bautista. I'm living in 1 Duckwood Drive in Danbury. And also, I have a business, a small business, but it still is a business in Danbury. My name of the business is El Millenio, which is in North Street. And also, I have a few properties also in the North Street. And I came to put this in, to tell everybody in this meeting tonight, especially the council, the common councils of this city, to take in consideration of this law, because this is going to hurt. Our business, they're still already hurt, but it's going to still hurt more the business, and also the revenue for the business is going to be weak in a few months later. I don't expect to be too longer till that happens, because that already started. A lot of people leave the town, as many apartments, as many houses for rent, because the people are scared. We, all the people here tonight, we are not criminals. That's why we came over here to show the face, and to please tell everybody here in the Common Council to take in consideration, because we don't want to make mistakes like other people did in other towns, or in other cities or states. So my question and my opinion is, can please take in consideration this new law? Thank you.
My name is Don Troyano. I live at... Sorry, my voice is going. I played hockey last night. Don Troyano, 80 Hillendale Road, Danbury. I also own a business here in town that frankly isn't affected by this. I'm interstate, doesn't much matter to me. But what does matter to me is the economy.
Just speak into the mic, just a little closer, because I know you're hoarse.
Thanks a lot. What does matter to me is the economy of Danbury. I grew up in this town. I spent better than 500 hours researching what is going to happen when you pass this. You have the fiduciary responsibility to legislate in an economically sensible manner, regardless of how you feel about immigration, okay? Does anybody here know what that is? Economically responsible matter means you are about to push 20,000, by his estimates, not mine, 20,000 people that are consumers out of this community in the next 90 to 120 days. All right? I just want to give you an idea of how much they consume in the course of a year. $250 million a year. Not my estimates. This comes from the Department of Labor and Statistics, okay? So I didn't come up with these numbers randomly, all right? I'm not a great public speaker, although I think it's important that I speak tonight. Most notably, you know, once this happens, I brought up, and I think I've written all of you letters about a city called Riverside, New Jersey. Hoping some of you read that letter. This city enacted legislation no different from what we're doing here tonight. That city is virtually bankrupt, all right? We need to think about what we're going to do here. I do not want to see the city I grew up in, all right, commit economic suicide. Please, I'm begging you for you and for me and for all the people out here to save the city. Before you jump into this thing, what I'm proposing very simply is that we do what we asked the guy in the Dunkin' Donuts, was going to put a little drive-through in. And the city required him to do an economic impact study.
Don't go there, Don, not in the Dunkin' Donuts.
Why not? The point is, they asked for it. Fair enough. And what I'm saying is, the city of Danbury should order an economic impact study prior to proceeding with this very, very risky legislation you are about to put your names to. And we are going to have to pay for it if you guys are wrong, because I know I'm right. And you will see the impact in the near term. So legislate responsibly, move ahead carefully. That's all I ask. Have a good day.
Please, any cell phones, just be careful not to let them go off. If you can put them on vibrate. Ma'am, over in the back.
Good evening, Mr. Barton. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jose Mary Grandford, and I live at 19 Faith Lane in Danbury, Connecticut. I'm here to plead to all of you councils to take a look around this room right now. And if you are not going to be impacted with the passing of this law, may you raise your hand. May you raise your hand if you don't know that, you know, in the morning, when you're passing by Dunkin' Donuts to grab your coffee, or any other coffee shop around the downtown area, if that's going to be open again. This law is going to impact us greatly. We are all here to ask for a better future, not only for ourselves, but also for the ones that we love, our families, our children. And I would hate to see, I work for a bank, and I would hate to see my clients having to leave and abandon this country out of fear. America was always known as the home, I'm sorry, sir, America was always known to be the land of the free and the home of the brave. I believe that each one of us, immigrants here in this country, are really brave, because we know the difficulties each one of us here face in order to obtain a legal documentation. Ladies and gentlemen, be the one to change the laws of the Constitution of the United States. Be the ones to help us, immigrants, all of us, to make a better living, not only to you, but to all of us. Laws need to be created. Let's think about that. You are all brilliant people, and we all are counting with your support and your support. that each one of you have a better decision and are acting on our behalf. So, I please, I beg you and I ask you, from, to look deep down inside your heart and see how can you, you are going to be affected, not only yourselves, but also your family. Please, take me seriously, a deep consideration, and how this law is going to affect not only you and I, but also all of our children and our children's children to come. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time. Sir?
My name is Edney Lima. I live at Ninety-Five Park Avenue, apartment number nineteen.
A little closer here.
First name is Edney, E-D-N-E-I, last name is Lima, L-I-M-A. I live at Ninety-Five Apartment, Ninety-Five Park Avenue, apartment number nineteen, Danbury, Connecticut, oh-six-eight-one-zero. I just want to, see, I've been in this country for twelve years and most of the people here know me as a Danburi hero. The mayor of Danbury already handed me two plaques for saving five American citizens in this town. I just want to say that if I was not here twelve years ago, would be five people, they're American citizens, that would be dead already. That's all. I just want to give my little speech and ask you guys just to think about what you guys want to do with the town. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel from Twenty-two George Street, Danbury, first floor, right around the corner here. We heard all the economical, all the stats.
Daniel, can we just get your last name?
Daniel Ribero, R-I-B-E-I-R-O. Okay? We know all the economic stats about the impact of this law passing and everything. And there's much more to that. I have a question here. Just judging by the last names, I see on these plaques here, before anybody started their professional lives or adult lives, imagine if this happened to the parents or grandparents of you guys. Would any of you guys be here today? No, I don't think so. What we've been trying to do here, there are many misconceptions about us immigrants. We're not criminals. It's not about crime, it's about breaking the law, it's about survival. A lot of you guys don't know what goes on in the lives of people that risk, basically risk their lives to fight death, to jump up borders, to come to this country. Would you guys consider giving your lives to anything? I know there are many parents here that got kids. I believe that the only people in this, on this planet, that you guys would give your lives up to for your kids. That's what the parents are doing. We're risking jumping borders, going through rivers, snakes, animals, everything, to give a better life to the kids. We're not here to play, we're not here to mess anybody's country up, we're not here to break any laws. We're just trying to have life with peace and dignity in the future where we can see our kids growing, where we can see something better for us. Because unfortunately, where we came from, where we were born, unfortunately, we did not have that. So, no one's here to, we're not here to cause any havoc or play around, which causes any trouble. We're here just to looking for a better chance. And the reason why we're illegals is not because we want to be illegals. This country is making us illegals. We do not have any chance, we haven't had a chance, to get a driver's license, insurance, some places in the United States, even medical attention. We've got people dying on hospital beds because they're illegal and they can't get insurance for that. Is that the right way to go about triggering immigration in this country? I see in the foreheads of people here ashes, which means a lot of people here believe in God. And we made a prayer, we had a prayer before we started, "A country under God." Ask yourselves, is it really true? Because the word of God says totally different from what you guys are acting right now. I know that's something that has to be done. I totally agree with you, Mayor, and everybody here. There's something that has to be done. But before you guys try to do something, think. Because we see on the TV a lot of medications for a lot of incurable diseases that seem perfect, but you should think about the side effects are worse than the effects of the medication. So, think about the side effects of this law passing. Think about Danbury, less twenty thousand people. Think about Danbury, less two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars each year in its budget. Is that worth it? Is it worth it? All we asking here is for a chance. That's it. Nothing else. Because we're humans too. And what we want is a better life. And we want to be part of the country, because this country was built by immigrants. So, that's what we want to do, keep this country going. Look at the way the country is right now. Instead of doing what we're doing to immigrants, let's adjust the real ills of the country that's bringing this country down. I'm proud to be who I am, I'm proud to be Brazilian, and I'm proud to be here. I'm going to school right now and I'm proud to graduate and some in a few years serve this country. Because this country gave me opportunity, when I got here as a kid, to go to school and to graduate and to go to college, something that might not be impossible if I stayed back in my country. Where education's low, violence is unbelievable, just a second, the war in Iraq. We've got over three thousand deaths right now. In my country, the four years, five years that the wars have been going on, two-hundred-thousand people died. And we're not at war. You know what I'm saying? I'm not asking you guys to feel pity for us, but just give us a chance, because that's what each and every one of us here and those people outside want, is one chance. That's all we asking, because we haven't had a chance to do anything right. We haven't had a chance to follow the law. Because since the day, even before we got here, we judged as illegals. And we haven't had a chance to prove it differently. So, please, just think, when you go home tonight, look yourself in the mirror, look at your kids sleeping, think that somebody's family you guys could be destroying through this law. Thank you very much.
That concludes our public speaking portion. Daniel, you get the last word tonight, so. I'm sorry, we only have a half an hour by city charter to do public speaking. With that, we're going to move on with our announcements for tonight. All of the calendars in front of you. There are some specific events I just want to point out to the council. Specifically, on February thirteenth, Korean War Veterans Meeting, call Bernie Rotunda for details, his number is listed on there. In addition to that, on the fifteenth, all city offices will be closed due to Lincoln's birthday. The Remember the Maine Ceremony will be at the corner of West and Division Street on February fifteenth as well. And the start time for that is seven PM. Please be prompt. Offices are also closed on February the eighteenth for President's Day, so that's a long four-day weekend to let your constituents know. In addition to that, on March first, is a twentieth annual Horde Foundation Gala at the Ethan Allen Hotel. We look to get a good participation by members of the Common Council this evening. Now, seeing that there are no other announcements this evening. Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Eggersheth. Any corrections, changes, or deletions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and adopt some of the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Aye-savant motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for February sixth, two thousand and eight. Number two, receive the communication and confirm the reappointment of Art Mannion, Hillel Goldman, Joseph Peppin, Mark Koschel, and William D. Bone to the Board of Ethics for terms, I'm sorry, with terms to expire December first, two thousand and twelve. Number three, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Mary Comstock to the Trial Revision Commission to replace Thomas Green, who resigned. Number four, receive the communication and confirm the reappointment of Phil Serminera as an alternate member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire January first, two thousand and eleven. Number five, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Ellen V. Trudelt and Linda L. Murray as members of the Conservation Commission and confirm the reappointment of Edward F. Kobelski Jr. as a member of the Conservation Commission. Number eleven, receive the communication and approve the transfer of twenty thousand dollars into the Fire Department Special Service Account number two-zero-one-zero-point-five-zero-five-two due to ongoing events. Number twelve, receive the communication and accept the road widening parcel, Sheridan Street and Triangle Street, from Sheridan Commons LLC. Number eighteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to apply for and accept funding not to exceed forty thousand, forty thousand dollars from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to purchase a wheelchair-accessible van. Number nineteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to accept funds and execute any agreements or other documents necessary to effectuate the FEMA grant available through the United Way for the purpose of acquiring homeless shelter supplies. Number twenty, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to apply for, accept grant funds for the amount of one-hundred-and-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars, and execute any agreements or other documents necessary to effectuate the homeless shelter grant. Number twenty-one, receive the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to sign the agreement, project grant agreement between the State of Connecticut and the City of Danbury under the local bridge program for Bacchus Avenue over Mary Brook Bridge number zero-three-four-zero-two-four, together with such other documents as may be necessary for the accomplishment of the purposes thereof. Excuse me. Number twenty-two, receive the communication and adopt the resolutions renewing authorization for the acquisition or negotiation of property rights for Pocono Lane slash Mountain Road, Grenier, and Worcester School. Number twenty-three, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number twenty-five, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Twenty-six, receive the committee report, refer the proposal, sale of city property to a public hearing and posting in accordance with Public Act zero-seven dash two-one-eight. Number twenty-seven, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number twenty-eight, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number thirty, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Thirty-one, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. And thirty-two, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee.
So, Eggersheth?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have number thirty-two removed off the consent calendar, please.
Item thirty-two is removed from the consent calendar. Mr. Rotella?
Yeah, I have a request. Can you remove item number four?
Item twenty-seven is removed from the consent calendar. Seeing that, I'll try your minds. Mr. President?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Eggersheth. Any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, promotion, Danbury Police Department. Dear Common Council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Detective Adam B. Marcus to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department. Adam was appointed in March nineteen ninety-eight and is the recipient of several unit citations. In two thousand and seven, Chief's Achievement Award, two exceptional police service awards, and a mayor's letter of commendation. He was appointed to the position of detective in June two thousand and seven, served as a member of the crime scene unit, and currently serves as a member of the SWAT team. Adam is also a certified police instructor.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the promotion of Detective Adam B. Marcus to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about Detective Marcus's promotion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, promotion, Danbury Police Department. Dear Common Council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Detective Adam B. Marcus to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department. Adam was appointed in March nineteen ninety-eight and is the recipient of several unit citations. In two thousand and seven, Chief's Achievement Award, two exceptional police service awards, and a mayor's letter of commendation. He was appointed to the position of detective in June two thousand and seven, served as a member of the crime scene unit, and currently serves as a member of the SWAT team. Adam is also a certified police instructor.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the promotion of Detective Adam B. Marcus to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about Detective Marcus's promotion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
I don't know if Detective Marcus is back there, Officer Coe?
No.
He's outside working, so let's give him a round of applause anyways. Madam Clerk?
I also submit for your confirmation the promotion of Officer Gary M. Coe to the position of Sergeant to the Danbury Police Department. Gary was appointed in September nineteen ninety-six and is the recipient of a unit citation and a Safe Driving Award. Gary is a lifelong resident of Danbury, graduated from Danbury High School, earned a BS in Economics from UConn, and a Master's of Justice Law and Administration from Western Connecticut State University. Thank you for consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Arkani?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the promotion of Officer Gary M. Coe to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about Detective Marcus's promotion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
I don't know if Detective Marcus is back there, Officer Coe?
No.
He's outside working, so let's give him a round of applause anyways. Madam Clerk?
I also submit for your confirmation the promotion of Officer Gary M. Coe to the position of Sergeant to the Danbury Police Department. Gary was appointed in September nineteen ninety-six and is the recipient of a unit citation and a Safe Driving Award. Gary is a lifelong resident of Danbury, graduated from Danbury High School, earned a BS in Economics from UConn, and a Master's of Justice Law and Administration from Western Connecticut State University. Thank you for consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Arkani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I received the communication and request the confirmation and promotion of Officer Gary M. Coe to the position of Sergeant for the Danbury Police Department.
I'm going to give that one second to Councilwoman McMahon. So, any discussion about Officer Coe's promotion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
Gary, congratulations. Please stand and be recognized. Both you and Adam, we'd like to wish you all the best as sergeants in the Danbury Police Department. And we've got a lot of young officers, and so with the Chief Baker's reorganization plan, they're going to have a lot of work to do, so keep up the good work. Items two through five were consent. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc Hispanic Center.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the referral to send to an ad hoc committee with Director of Finance, a representative from the Hispanic Center, and a representative from the mayor's office.
And our committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Eggersheth, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc safe. S.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with the Director of Finance, Director of Elderly Services, Representative of the Mayor's Office, Director of Personnel, and a representative from the Commission on Aging.
Our committee shall be a five-man ad hoc committee, a little bit different than what we do. And the individuals shall be as follows. Councilwoman Stanley, you'll chair this committee. Councilman Seaberry, Councilwoman McMahon, Councilman Esposito, and Councilman Visconti.
And add the assessor.
And we'd like to add the assessor as well. So, that's a five-man committee, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Communication, donation to the homeless shelter. Dear Mayor Bowden, the Department of Health, Housing, and Welfare has received another five-hundred-dollar donation for any costs associated with the operation of our homeless shelter by Connecticut Light and Power Company Giving Program. Within the past year, Connecticut Light and Power has donated a total of eight-hundred dollars to the homeless shelter program. Please place this item on the agenda for the January Common Council meeting, as this donation would need to be deposited into the H-L-T-H-D-O-N-six-thousand-point-zero-two account. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Scott Leroy, Director of Health, Housing, and Welfare.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication, accept the five-hundred-dollar donation, apply it to line item H-L-T-H-D-O-N-six-zero-zero-zero-point-zero-two, and send the appropriate letter of thanks.
Second.
It's been made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Aye-savant motion carries unanimously.
Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the Common Council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for the performances by the Cellmates, which is the senior center band and the senior center chorus from the following. The Gardens, twenty-five. New Milford Health and Rehab, twenty-five. Maplewood at Danbury, twenty-five. Please accept these donations and transfer the above seventy-five dollars into line item five-zero-zero-two-five-six-zero-one, office supplies. Thank you respectfully, Susan M. Camario, Director of Elderly Services.
It's a pleasure, Councilman Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication, accept
Both you and Adam, we'd like to wish you all the best as Sergeants in the Danbury Police Department, and we've got a lot of young officers, and so with the Chief Baker's reorganization plan, they're going to have a lot of work to do, so keep up the good work. Items two through five were consent. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc Hispanic Center.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the referral to send to an ad hoc committee with Director of Finance, a representative from the Hispanic Center, and a representative from the mayor's office.
Our committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Riley, Councilman Negersheth, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc save.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with the Director of Finance, Director of Elderly Services, Representative of the Mayor's Office, Director of Personnel, and a representative from the Commission on Aging.
Our committee shall be a five-man ad hoc committee, a little bit different than what we do, and the individuals shall be as follows. Councilwoman Stanley, you'll chair this committee. Councilman Seaberry, Councilwoman McMahon, Councilman Esposito, and Councilman Visconti.
And add the assessor.
And we'd like to add the assessor as well. So that's a five-man committee, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Communication, donation to the homeless shelter. Dear Mayor DeBouton, the Department of Health, Housing, and Welfare has received another $500 donation for any costs associated with the operation of our homeless shelter by Connecticut Light and Power Company Giving Program. Within the past year, Connecticut Light and Power has donated a total of $800 to the homeless shelter program. Please place this item on the agenda for the January Comm. Council meeting as this donation would need to be deposited into the H L T H D O N 6,000.02 account. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Scott Leroy, Director of Health, Housing, and Welfare.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication, accept the $500 donation, apply it to line item H L T H D O N 6,000.02, and send the appropriate letter of thanks.
Second. Most of them made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor DeBouton and members of the Comm. Council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for the performances by the cellmates, which is the senior center band and the senior center chorus from the following: The Gardens 25, New Milford Health and Rehab 25, Maplewood and Danbury 25. Please accept these donations and transfer the above $75 into line item 5002-5601, office supplies. Thank you respectfully, Susan M. Camario, Director of Elderly Services.
What's your pleasure, Councilman Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication, accept the donations, and place the $75 into line item 5002-5601, and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Most of them made and seconded by Councilman Negersheth. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 10, please.
Communication, donation to the Fire Department, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Dear Mayor DeBouton and members of the council, as Chief of the Fire Department, I submit to you a proposal that we accept 160 smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. This is a donation from Lowe's of Danbury. Please see the attached. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Respectfully yours, Jeffrey R. Harold, Fire Chief.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Curran?
I move to receive the communication and accept the donation from Lowe's and send the appropriate letter of thanks.
Most of them made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. For me through the chair, the Chief, Harold.
Chief?
Could you just enlighten us on how you go about distributing the equipment that's going to be donated?
Yes, these are actually distributed in a couple of different ways. We actually have on each of the apparatus right now a small rubber made container carrying three or four of the detectors. At any one time, we go on any kind of a call, we come into an environment, we find there are either no detectors, for example, for whatever reason, the lieutenants are, you know, under our, you know, aegis, being able to put them up, either put them into the house. Sometimes they even ask us to install them for them, which the guys will do. We also carry batteries for the same purpose that are donated through other companies. I think Duracell's made a donation for batteries, but they're given out that way. Recently, I attended a function sponsored by ARP where we actually gave away six of those to the elderly for them as well. So they're given away in a couple of different manners, but that's, you know, they're available if somebody can't afford one, doesn't have one, or if we notice that they're missing one. That's how we give them away. Any?
Any further questions for Chief Harold? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds in accepting the donation. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Items 11 and 12 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Communication, proposed road improvements, Cannondale Drive. Dear Mayor DeBouton and Council members, at the December 7, 2004 Comm. Council meeting, petition for the acceptance of Cannondale Drive as the city street was received from property owners along Cannondale Drive. A mail survey was conducted by our office, and a public hearing was held by the council on January 9, 2006. At the February 7, 2006 Comm. Council meeting, our department was authorized to proceed with the design and construction work required to bring Cannondale Drive to a condition suitable for acceptance by the city. The engineering department subsequently hired a consulting engineer to design the approval project. As the improvement design progressed, it became evident that the project cost would likely be greater than originally anticipated. Expected property owners were notified of the projected increase in the project cost in June 28, 2007, mail resurvey letters sent out by this office. A July 31, 2007 letter report generally positive responses was sent to the mayor and Councilman Mary Saricino and Fred Visconti. Copy of the letter attached. Design work continued on this project. Attached to a November 20, 2007 letter attached to theater consentist of the mayor's office from Attorney Greg Brownstein was a petition from property owners asking the city to abandon the Cannondale Drive improvement project. Our office then resurveyed the property owners to verify that termination of the project was the request of the majority of abiding property owners. The survey results were: Six votes for termination of the project, which is 85.7 percent; one vote to continue the project, which is 14.3 percent. It should be noted that to date, $19,750 has been sent for survey and engineering on this project. If the project does not go forward, this amount will not be reimbursed to the city, but will be covered by a special account previously set up by the Comm. Council to fund assessment projects until a determination is made as to whether or not to proceed with projects. The existing assessment account has $100,000 in funds. If this project does not go forward, the available funding will be reduced to $80,250. Another issue related to the proposed improvement and acceptance of Cannondale Drive needs to be resolved. At November 1, 2005 meeting, the Comm. Council acted on a request by homeowners that the city maintain Cannondale Drive. A copy of item 24 of the November 1, 2005 meeting minutes is enclosed here, reference. The Comm. Council ad hoc committee recommended that the city sand and plow Cannondale Drive until the road project is either accepted or rejected by the residents. If the project is now rejected by the Comm. Council, are we going, are we correct to assume that the city plowing and sanding of this road is to terminate? At this time, we requested an ad hoc committee meeting be convened to determine whether to continue with the road improvement project or to terminate the project based on the current overwhelmingly negative opinion of the neighborhood, and two, whether to continue to plow and sand this private road. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Rick Alcori, City Engineer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and terminate the proposed road improvement project and cease to sand and plow and maintain it as a city road effective immediately.
Most of them made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Is there any discussion? Mr. Esposito. Esposito, no? Okay, Mr. Visconti? Excuse me, Mr. Shinie.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, through the chair, I have a question either through Antonio Public Works or maybe Corporation Council could enlighten me a little bit deeper on it. And I'm going to test your Code section, 1724G, as it relates to the subdivisions. Can you review that with me when it states that all roads shall be conducted and a bond shall be placed, and if the road is not properly maintained, that the city shall plow the roads? So can you enlighten that for me with the help of Antonio on that one? And I have it here in case you don't know what 17G is.
Thanks, Councilman. Thanks, Councilman. Can you hear me now? This Cannondale Road issue rises and falls on the road assessment provisions of Code Section 2, 143. That section provides that if the council chooses, it can fund, construct, and then assess property owners for a road improvement project like Cannondale Road, like Wilkes Road, and some others that have occurred. As far as the subdivision process and the bond, that issue hadn't come up in the context of this road, to my understanding. It's not in the report. Whether there's a bond or not applies to cases where if we know that a bond does exist, we try to acquire the bond, use the bond, and assist to defray the cost of the project. If, however, there is no bond, the provision of the ordinance provides that an assessment project like this can proceed, or an alternate proposal or procedure for road improvement can occur under a different section of the Code of Ordinances, which provides for a little more contribution, if you will, preliminary contribution by the property owners on the road. So there's really two options. The one you're talking about is not the one that applies in this case. This is a 2, 143 project.
Please proceed.
But again, now, when you read the Code sections, wouldn't this apply as well? Or you pick and choose which Code, what some roads they will fall on? Because this, from my understanding, is a subdivision, correct? A small one, but it is considered a subdivision.
But the subdivision issue only comes up in a limited context for purposes of the existence of the bond. If there is a bond, as I say, the bond may be usable if we have access to the bond. The project primarily is a procedure under 2, 143 to improve the road using the assessment project procedures regardless of the bond. The bond may assist in defraying some of the costs, but for an assessment project, it's really paid by the individuals as assessed subsequent to the completion of the project.
Further questions?
Do you have anything?
I just want to add to what the council was basically stating. I think what you're making reference to is a provision that allows the city, pretty much the Public Works Department, in a brand new road that has gone through all of the approval processes, gotten subdivision approval, should the property owner, prior to conveying that road to the city, not maintain it and put the residents at danger, we can pull the bond that we have to maintain the road. That's really what I think that section's applicable to. Cannondale is an existing road, has been around for a long time, and it does not apply to that provision. And there is no bond. The original bond, whether it was relinquished or it might have never even been collected whenever the project was constructed.
Mr. Shinie, see anymore?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that it's a shame that this project has ended up the way it has. We have been involved since myself and Councilman Perkins in 2004 trying to get something done. And we thought we had the issue pretty well settled, and then it was sort of pulled out from underneath us. But hopefully in the future, if people move on and other people move into the houses that are existing there now and are a little bit more wanting to get something done, we can take another look at it. But it was a lot of work, a lot of time and effort put in by both Mr. Buckley and Mr. Idarola and Farid. So that's about all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any other discussion? Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Corporation Council, please.
Mr. Pinter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Pinter. My question to you is this. I understand through Mr. Visconti as well as just the experiences that I've had that this project has been going on for a number of years, and that our engineer department and everybody else have put a great deal of time, a great deal of effort into it, and it's amassed a bill of over, just about $20,000. That money is not going to be received back to the city coffers. Is there, in effect, in future, if such a thing happens, is it possible to upfront say, look, if you guys pull out of this, that you're going to have to make restitution to the city?
That can be done if it's incorporated into the ordinance that covers assessment projects, sewer water, and road assessment projects. Presently, there is no provision for that. This is an unusual case in the sense that most, if there is a road, sewer, or water project that's abandoned, it usually occurs because the costs are so exorbitantly high or that for other reasons that are, the city decides it doesn't want to proceed or can't proceed, or the votes are such that the people really don't want the project to proceed. This case is a little different in the sense that the council, you had approved the preliminary assessments, the project was going forward with the expenditures, and then it turned out that the people on the road changed their minds due to whatever factors occurred that changed their minds. So the answer is, aside from, let's call it litigation of some kind to try to recover those costs, making appropriate arguments in a case which is different from normal cases, or amending the ordinance in the future, which you can do, to provide an opportunity to collect in this type of case.
Thank you, Mr. Pinter. Any more discussion? Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Cory, City Engineer.
Cory, please. How you doing?
Let's just say a couple of years from now, several years probably, people move in, people move out. How long does your department archive these types of reports and records?
We have a good record. We keep them for several years from now. The road assessment projects are a little bit different than sewer and water. We have an ordinance that the council, if they reject a project for sewer and water, then they forbid the petitioners to petition again in five years. As far as road projects, I believe a determination by the Corporation Council that they can apply in the future, not necessarily waiting for five years unless the council determines so tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cory. Any further discussion or questions regarding this issue? Mr. Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Seaberry, and for the benefit of the rest of my colleagues, I've already had some discussion with Corporation Council's office about forming an ad hoc committee next month to look into amending the ordinance so that we can protect the city from this type of event happening in the future. So keep your eyes peeled, there'll be something on March's agenda in regards to an ad hoc committee.
Mr. Cavill, any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 14, please.
Communication, additional appropriation for snow and ice removal and maintenance. To Mayor DeBouton and the Comm. Council, from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance. As for the attached memo from Director of Public Works, Antonio Idarola, I hereby certify the availability of $300,000 to be transferred in the city's contingency account to the following line items: Snow and ice removal, storm, meal, $2,000; snow and ice removal, ice control materials, $50,000; park maintenance, overtime salaries, $125,000; equipment maintenance for outside services, $4,000; equipment maintenance, maintained automotive equipment, $86,000; equipment maintenance, lubrication materials, $8,000; equipment maintenance, tires, $25,000, for a total of $300,000. The status of the contingency account is as follows: Budgeted contingency, $1,300,000; appropriations to date, $675,025. This request, $300,000; balancing contingency, $375,025. Thank you.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the transfer of $300,000 from the city's contingency account for the purpose of snow removal and equipment maintenance as requested for the appropriate accounts.
Most of them made and seconded by Councilman Calendrino. Any discussion? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Idarola. I understand going through the report, there has been a significant amount of storms that have fallen on weekends or possibly even holidays where we had to use up a lot of overtime. The concern is that we're looking at some storms coming up, even I think this coming weekend, that'll be possibly a Saturday/Sunday storm. And I wanted to know if many of these costs, I know some of them are ongoing requirements that'll be needed for additional storms, particularly weekend or holiday storms, but are some of these equipment maintenance requirements and repairs, let's say one-time things or breakdowns that wouldn't necessarily be needed on an ongoing basis, looking forward to the amount of money we have left in our contingency? Just want to get a feel for that.
Sure. The equipment, the equipment maintenance request will pretty much bring us whole to some repairs that we do need to make. It also allows us to purchase some much-needed tires for our police fleet and the public works fleet. The rest of that would really be a forecasting to take us into the end of the year. That's the additional request.
The end of the season?
Well, no, really to take us to the end of the...
Budget year?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Idarola? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on the appropriation. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 15, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc Sister City.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with a representative from the mayor's office and a representative from the ancient order of Hybernians.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Curran, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Levy. Madam, item 16, please.
Request, communication, request for water, 22 Shelter Rock Lane.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilman Sadi?
I'd like to refer this matter to the planning...
I'd like to refer this matter to the planning, the planning commission and the city engineer for reports to be returned to the council for the next meeting.
Seeing no objection, as so ordered. Madam Clerk, item 17.
Communication, request for water, 102 Federal and Star Roads.
Pleasure, Council. Councilman Negashat?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a report for, from planning and engineering as well.
Seeing no objection, as so ordered. Items 18 through 23 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 24, please.
Ad hoc report, request for sewer and wat, excuse me, ad hoc report, Connecticut Film Festival.
Pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavill?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second. It's made and seconded by Councilman Rotella. Any discussion about waiving the reading of this report? Seeing none, then we'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item 24, the report's been waived. Mr. Steichels.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Rotella. Discussion. Mr. Sheeneysey, and then Mr. Levy, I'll get to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, few questions. One would be to the Finance Director. I didn't see any certification of funds for this request. Is that, is there one, or?
Mr. St. Hilaire. Said he had to thank you.
I will follow it, once you guys take action.
So isn't, Mr. Follow, isn't tonight part, do you approve the funding as well?
As soon as, I think there's an affirmative motion, then we'll ask Mr. St. Hilaire to verbally certify funds that are available.
Again, the other question, I guess, would be to the person headed to Connecticut Festival of the year.
Mr. Carruthers is here, yes.
He's the guy.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Bowden.
Going through, because I did attend the ad hoc, well, some of the questions that I read here, there's one question, why did you choose Danbury, then, while continuing in Bethel, would be one question. And two, is, going through your website here, I guess the film festival is indie films? Indie-related films? Can you explain what those are? Just let me answer, then you can go all at once. And I guess, the other question I would have, is maybe, I don't know if you can answer it, is one of the, during the ad hoc, it was made mention that the Palace Theater will be used to host one of the film events. I wonder if you can elaborate a little bit deeper in that, because during that committee, I think that's a key to the success, to the success of this festival. So we, I want some type of assurance that that would be available to this festival during that time. You might not be able to answer that, but...
Well, first of all, the festival began in 2005, is the Bethel Film Festival, and on the heels of the impending tax credit, we decided to expand it to a statewide event, which we did in 2006, in eight cities and towns, all at the same time. So we saw an opportunity to actually change the name and start rebranding it after our first successful year, where we had 3,000 people, it's a strong local, regional festival. And now what we've done is, we've turned it into a nine-month event, with nine weekends, and 12 midweek screening events, and of course, the main event, which would culminate here. As far as the types of films, they're generally referred to as independent films, but we're talking to a couple of motion picture distributors, to possibly have films, maybe from Focus Features, where they might test drive them here during our festival, but they wouldn't be previously released anywhere else. So that, those might be larger budgeted films. I mean, generally, an independent film could run anywhere from $500 to $2 million, sometimes as high as $6 million. But the larger films that are being drawn into Connecticut because of the tax credit are in the, you know, they're in the $50, $60 million range. Now, as far as the palace goes, I had lunch with Joe DeSilva last week, and we took a tour of the different theaters that were available. And I, I can't totally speak for him, but he seems very committed to actually fixing up one of the theaters and renovating it in time for the festival in May, which is very exciting, you know, since it's been closed for so long. I feel honored that he's going to do it for this festival.
I do have another question, but I'll observe that to the end, just give the other council people a chance.
Okay, while we have Mr. Carruthers here. Please, folks, if you could monitor your cellphones and put them on vibrate, it'd be appreciated. Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I read the proposal, it was quite lengthy. Actually, I wish the ICE report was as long as cultural report here. But that being the case, I'd like to know a little bit about, I did look, look up the corporation, it's an LLC, I wasn't sure, is it a nonprofit organization?
No, we're not a nonprofit yet, but we're looking into doing that as soon as we have the funding and the time to put it together.
Are there salaried people on that, in the organization?
There's, I wouldn't say salaried, if there's any money left over, we might get paid. I mean, it's basically run like a nonprofit, without being a nonprofit.
Could you give us a little background on other promotions that you've done, that are very much similar to this? It is relatively new, and I know that the LLC is relatively new.
Through the chair, please, Mr. Levy.
Yes, please, excuse me, Your Honor.
Well, as far as film festivals go, these are my experiences with film festivals, the Bethel Film Festival, and now we're into our third year with the Connecticut Film Festival. We are running a very unique festival, in that there are no festivals that are statewide. We're doing this because of the tax credit, and that doesn't necessarily offer any more experience, but we're operating multiple venues, multiple cities, multiple towns, very complicated to organize, and goes way beyond what any film festival would ever have to deal with. But we're doing this because we have a statewide tax credit, and we're dovetailing our efforts into that. My other background has been in producing and managing entertainment since 1980, and I produce people such as Tower of Power, The Average White Band, Smokey Robinson, taking care of everything from soup to nuts with transportation, hospitality, staging, lighting, backstage, backline equipment, house sound systems, the whole nine yards. So my background, since 1980, has been in booking entertainment, but I'm in the event and entertainment marketing business, where I secure sponsors and do strategic marketing for organizations. For instance, just recently, I'm speaking to the organization Interlude, which is a mental health agency, and Danbury, about working on some marketing for them. So it's quite varied what I do, but this festival is something that, is a brand I've been building for the last several years.
Thank you. And through the chair, if I may, please proceed, Mr. Levy. There's also, although there was no budget included in this, which kind of surprised me, because even our, the nonprofits that we do give grants to, we require that they have an itemized budget. But you do point out that $10,000 will be spent on advertising, and I was wondering, what happens to the other $65,000?
Well, there, I'm not sure why you don't have a budget, but there has been a budget circulating around for the festival, and I, I'm not sure why you don't have that. We plan to produce...
Perhaps I was the only one that was missing that through?
I don't know. Was that given out at the ad hoc? Was Mr. Levy at the ad hoc?
The budget's actually in excess of about $420,000, and $75,000 is just a portion of that. As far as $10,000 in advertising goes, that's just guaranteeing what we're going to spend. We'll actually be spending a lot more than $75,000 on advertising and producing, more than quadrupled that in promotion for the city of Danbury, probably closer to $1 million worth. So the city of Danbury will certainly see a good, a great return on their investment. Right now, we're talking to four publishing companies about producing 2 million programs that'll be circulated in newspapers through the company that, the Journal Register Papers, New Mass Media, and Media Publications that took over, I think it's Media Publications. I just met with David Dear the other day, at the News Times, and there's plans afoot to get together with his publishing group, and the total amount will be approximately 2 million programs out there, which is unheard of at any film festival. And those are inserted into newspapers, so it's great, it's great promotion for the city of Danbury. And just today, I spoke to editors and journalists at the Stanford Advocate, who I'd love to tell them tomorrow, the main event's going to be in, the main event's going to be in Danbury, since they want to get information in for our February 29th, and March 1st, and 2nd event in Stanford.
And there's one other, again, through the chair, event, I noticed in the agreement, that there was no option at the end of that agreement, if this is a success, that the first option is not offered to Danbury. In other words, this is, this is in its infancy, and if we go along with it, I would imagine that, and it is successful, and the city profits by it, that we would want some kind of, first right of refusal, at least, for future festivals.
Once again, I'm not really sure which documentation you have, but my, my original contract that went to, went to the attorneys, and then we were told to put together a one-page or now they've come out with a 10-page, or I believe, all three of them have down there for an option, and that is, my total intent is to hang my hat here with the festival, and hopefully have it here long after I'm gone.
Mr. Shepherd, you have a copy of that from Mr. Levy? Then is that in the contract, right of first refusal?
And I'd also like to add that Northwest Connecticut Convention and Visitors Bureau will be doing an economic impact study, and surveying people attending the festival, so that you have the right research. You need to make an educated decision on whether you want to move forward with it in the future.
I would like to thank you very much for, and also comment that the reason for my questioning is certainly because of a lack of information that I had before me, which is not, certainly not your fault. But I've seen bike races, where we've had national exposure, and I've seen foot races, and a whole variety of things take place in Danbury. And somehow, I think unless one item, a singular item, perhaps we need a total package of items to really put ourselves on the, on the map, as far as attracting people to center city, Danbury, and the community in general. We don't have any inner-city hotels to put people up. I look at that as well as, as an issue, and then I, I have to say, you know, this is taxpayers' money. Is this what, it's kind of speculating on a, on a private enterprise, and there is no direct benefit in the way of cash coming back, it's somewhat into the general economy of the community itself. And I'm not sure that the taxpayers were intending to do that or not, and that's the question I have.
Well, certainly, there's a lot of tangible and intangible benefits to this. And in answer to your question about the hotels, and a lot of film festivals around the country, the hotels are not right in the downtown area, and you do have to set up shuttles, even at places like Park City, which of course, most people here are certainly aware of the Sundance Film Festival, there are not enough places for accommodations for people to stay during that festival, and they actually have to travel down to Salt Lake City, which is a considerable distance. But, you know, I picked, I picked the Danbury and Bethel region to live in, out of about 12 cities and towns in Connecticut. And it's because I wanted to live here, and not have to move, and set up my business here. My business has been established for, since 1980, and I started in Stanford, and moved to Darien, and Westport, and now I'm in, you know, this is the community I live in. And one, my programming director and I identified several cities around the state that we felt could really benefit by having a festival like this, that were a perfect fit. This isn't the perfect fit for New Haven, for instance, New Haven has too much going on. It's not the perfect fit for Westport. Westport has a lot of arts and entertainment, and they really can't benefit by this. But a place like Danbury, or Middletown, or Norwalk, or several other cities we looked into, can really benefit from this event in the long term. And right now, I sent around some information, I don't know if you got it on your table tonight, there's a letter from Speaker Ammon endorsing this, because I'm part of the Hollywood East Task Force, and the Hollywood East Task Force is, was established to develop new film, video, music, and multi-digital media industry workforce in the state of Connecticut, because it's, it really doesn't exist on a large enough scale to sustain the number of, the number of productions coming into the state of Connecticut. And because of my, my, my production with the film festival, I was invited to be part of that. And what we're doing is, we're trying to, my, the other organizers and myself, want to dovetail the work development needs, and also the marketing of the industry in the state of Connecticut, right here in Danbury. That, I mean, that's part of our focus, that's one of those intangibles, but that can draw a lot of production and post-production people into the state of Connecticut. And for those of you who don't know, the state of Connecticut has the most competitive tax credit in the country for the film industry right now. Not only film, but music, video, and multi-digital media production. That means there are companies moving into the state left and right, and if this is, if this is the gateway to Connecticut's film industry, as we're going to be marketing it, that means it's going to become recognized as an important point in the industry in Connecticut, Danbury, because this is where the festival happens every year. But it's not just about the films, because as, as I mentioned to you, the five disciplines are pretty extensive. You have film, video, music, and multi-digital media. And because of that, the state of Connecticut likes what I've done to dovetail together, and they're getting behind it, and their task force recommendations have identified the Connecticut Film Festival as expanding it to a two-week event, here in Danbury, if it happens in Danbury. That means they're going to be getting behind it financially as well.
I, through the chair, I did read that, and I was kind of curious as to why the state of Connecticut, or the college, who was another venue for this, didn't want to financially participate.
Well, we're not finished. We have been in discussions over WestCon, I just met with the two people head of facilities, and also Paul Steinets, who's with their Public Relations Department, and also Betsy McDonough, who is the assistant to Dr. Schmodder. The vice presidents and the provost have all seen the proposal, they're very interested in working together. I'm not sure to what degree we will be working with them, but they do have a couple of venues that would be great to work with, because they're larger. They have a venue that seats 800 people, and maybe we would use that. There's also some facilities and some computer labs that we can use, so that if we had, we're running a workshop to learn how to use budgeting software, or accounting software for a film festival, we can have those people use those computers. But then, at the same time, I've been speaking to Mark over at the library, about possibly using their computer, their computer labs as well. So I don't know to what extent we'll be working with WestCon, but I know that it is part of their Values and Visions Task Force, to integrate more into the community, and I saw this as an opportunity, and realized it could also work the other way around, whereas we have an event in Danbury, and maybe we can get the community and the school working closer together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Levy, any further discussion on this issue? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're looking for $75,000.
Correct.
I noticed in hearing in the report from the ad hoc committee, that a partial, $75,000 to be considered a partial payment for the festival, as the total cost may be approximately $1 million.
No, I think there's something wrong in the wording. I had just recently given...
I hope there's something wrong with the minutes I've given.
No, $1 million, that sounds like it's, I'm not sure which line that is, because I read it, I thought, last night or the night before. Anyway, no, the, I just recently sat down with the speaker and the head of finance, House Finance and Commerce Committee, and presented an expanded proposal to the... House Finance and Commerce Committee, and presented an expanded proposal to the state for the next two years, that's $1.2 million, and that includes sending, sending representatives of the film festival to 10 major festivals, who will, when they're at the major festivals, will be promoting Danbury and the Connecticut Film Festival, and also running an educational program on the high school level in six different regions around the state, so that's where the expanded amount comes from, but it has nothing to do with the proposal here.
For the record, Your Honor, can we have some kind of, an answer on this, we're either going to be 75 or a million?
Well, we're not being going to be a million, because we don't have a million.
I'll go along with that.
Mr. Carruthers can ask, but that don't mean he gets. So, I would, I would suggest the commitment from the city, $75,000, if the council wants to put that money in, and that's what we're voting on tonight, there'll be no further-
(music)
The very last paragraph in Schedule A.
In Schedule A, okay, it's not in the contract. I can understand this language, it says, in turn, they will then evaluate future potential sponsorship by the city of Danbury by July 108. It is intended to mean potentially right of first refusal, I mean, it's a good faith provision to negotiate, to continue on, I think what some council members would like to see, if this does work, that we do have a codified, or a right of first refusal in the body of the contract. Now, I don't know if this contract's a boilerplate where you have to use the same type in other cities, no? Well, just for the record, it's not a boilerplate? Through the chair, please.
It really has been done through council's office.
Then I would, if this wouldn't be something that, through the chair, would otherwise derail this, because I think it's a good opportunity, I do have some more questions, is that we would include in the contract, an actual right of first refusal provision by, that the city can exercise that right. If that's not objectionable, either, and I don't know if that implicates any of the tax credits by the state, but I'd like to see that in there, and, and through the chair, if we could have Corporation Council do that as a condition of this approval, and I'd be more than happy to put that in the form of an amendment, if that wouldn't derail this project.
I don't know if an amendment's required, I think, I think we can make that a condition of approval, I think the record is clear that that's the expectation of the council.
Thank you, and just a follow-up then, and I apologize if I missed this in the, in the underlying record, but do you have an estimate on the actual accrual of, I guess, value, or to the economy and of Bethel? I know there's been estimates of what Danbury will potentially see, but where this has otherwise occurred, is there a sort of an after action or review?
What we did was ask the Northwest Connecticut Convention and Visitors Bureau to do an analysis of what it would bring to Danbury.
Okay.
He used the figures that Tom had presented from Bethel, but did not, in my view, I don't believe he had the actual numbers for what Bethel got out of it, but we will gain $530,000 in direct spending in Danbury.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Just to be clear on the motion, seeing that there's unanimity amongst the council members, that we would make sure a condition of approval would include very clear language about rights of first refusal, just to clarify the record found that. Okay, Mr. Chanese?
Thank you, Your Honor, through the chair, I just want to follow up on Councilman Levy's question regarding the makeup of your LLC, and now, are you the only member of your LLC, or are there other members besides yourself?
I'm the only member right now.
So you're a single-member LLC, so basically you are the person legally liable for everything. So that leads me to my next question is, is, to my, actually going to be my motion, to amend Councilman Stanley's motion, is that we, again, we approve up to $75,000, but just to protect the city a little bit, since you are a nonprofit, and it's only just you, so, again, you can leave tomorrow, and we, there's nothing to stop you from doing so, there's no board. So just to protect the city, is that we allocate up to $75,000, but do it in stages, to where you'll submit the invoices to the city, and the city will reimburse you accordingly, up to the $75,000. I think that's, that's my motion.
Motion made and seconded, and amending the main motion to, to have Mr. Carruthers present invoices, and the city to provide checks with the requisition, up to $75,000. Is that correctly, is there a state remo, state amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Calvo?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to either Mr. Carruthers or Mr. Shepherd, does that in any way affect your operation of this, or impede the, your ability to effectively bring this together by the first, the first part of May?
I think it could make it more difficult.
We have only, there's 100 days left before, if we, if you folks approve this. I originally had this to be paid in stages, and when I actually did it, I said, wait a second, I'm going to have one February 15, and one another in March 15, and he's going to be using it right away. So that's why I actually changed it to one payment. But I'm sure we can adapt the contract to do payments, but we should pay, and then so we can get the money spent to help bring the event to Danbury, and do all the marketing as, as he suggests.
Okay, if we're still on the amendment, is there any more discussion on the amendment?
Through the chair, Your Honor.
Hello?
To Corporation Council, Mr. Pinter. Is there another way to satisfy Councilman Chanese's request without attaching a difficult procedure to the petitioner? Can, can we have some oversight in a different ways, what I'm asking? Thank you.
One option might be to have an escrow account of some kind, joint account, joint bank accounts, for two people, signed to draw money out at various stages, that's just a slightly different version of the amendment that Mr. Chanese proposes. I don't think there's much in the way of bonding out there for something like this, the service, maybe hit a bond, I don't know, that has, you know, Mr. Carruthers, and, and I don't think Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Carruthers have discussed that. Other than that, it's either all of the money and time, according to the timeline, escrow, joint bank account, or periodic payments, I can't think of anything else.
Thank you.
No, I just want to interject here, at the risk of drawing the ire of the council, if Mr. Carruthers, with all due respect, is going to abscond with the money and take off to Hawaii, he's going to do it whether we have three checks or one check, certainly we, he'll be arrested pretty fast if he does do that, but, you know, I understand the hesitancy by the council, I respect that, I just want to share that, at this point, we're so on a tight timeframe, it might be difficult, but it's really up to the council. Further discussion on the amendment? If not, I'll try your minds on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, which would, yes, Mr. Sadi?
Through the chair, to Director of Finance, in trying to find some sort of amicable ground here, is there a way to give a level of comfort to the council, that the money can be sort of overseen as opposed to a lump sum, while not creating a logistical nightmare for somebody who has to wait for a bureaucracy to go through reviewing and developing and stamping invoices to then pay them? And along those lines, you know, maybe rather than escrow account or something, and depending on the cost of this, a bond of some kind, a surety bond that the city could claim against, I don't know if, you know, if the state requires that with regard to anything here, or if that's otherwise in the, in the works for this particular promotion. I don't want to make it cost prohibitive, I'm just trying to find some ground here.
I think you have to ask yourself, what are you, what are you paying? What are you buying? You know, are, if, if you're just paying for services to be a promoter for Danbury, then cut him a check, right up front. I mean, if that's what you're doing. Or are you going to hire him as a, you know, somebody to, you know, go out and do some advertising, then have him, you know, we'll reimburse him as, as he goes. Submit us the checks, and we'll reimburse you, up to $75,000, however you want to do it. But that's, you know, what are you paying him to do? I don't, you know, and then you can direct, direct me, and, and what you want to do.
Mr. Carruthers, let me just ask you a question, when is your official year-end, of the LLC?
It's, it's year, it's January 1 to the end of the year.
So at the conclusion of the, at the conclusion of the festival, would you be willing to provide us with an audit? Doesn't have to be a full-blown audit, and I know how expensive that is, but perhaps your current auditor can provide a breakdown of all expenditures as relates to $75,000, could you do that?
Absolutely.
Would that be satisfactory to council, that, that Mr. Carruthers provide us with a full audit for the expenditure on completion of the festival? Just throwing it out there as an idea.
I just want to follow through the chair, and now, the definition of an audit, you know, you've got to be careful by using the audit term, is it a certified public accountant audit, or just your accountant is putting something together? I mean, that's the question we, we need to ask, and a certified audit would be more expensive.
Well, we can, we can even have Mr. St. Hilario audit, he's looking for work all the time.
What about?
Okay, any further discussion related to the amendment? Mr. Sadi?
How about this? Monthly reports submitted under Mr. Shepherd's department, through our, in our departmental reports, that will account for expenditures to the council.
That was actually the original plan, is that I would be reporting to him regularly.
But to make sure that those dollars expended would be included in a monthly report, I mean, I see Wayne grimacing a little bit, I'm not sure, is that going to be a problem?
We'll, we'll make it happen, that's not a problem.
I think we can, we can do it, you know, I don't want to manage his, his production of the event.
It'll just be a reporting requirement to, to you, Wayne, and then you'll attach that to your economic development report for the month, that's all.
That may obviate the need for the amendment, I don't-
Are you comfortable with that? Then we withdraw the amendment? So now we're back to, shall we spend the $75,000 as a lump sum or not? That's where we are, any further discussion? Conditioned on, he provide monthly reports? And the right of first refusal in the contract? Any other discussion? All right, I'll try your minds on this item, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Mr. Levy is in the negative. Thank you, Mr. Carruthers.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, Mr. St. Hilario, do you certify availability funds, and if you could just let the council know where you'll be drawing those funds from?
I certify the availability of funds for $75,000 coming out of fund balance.
Taking out of fund balance. Because we got one more contract still out there, we have DMEA, so we've got to save Question was, why not, why not contingency? The answer to that is, we have one more contract out there, DMEA, that we're finishing up negotiating, so, that we're reserving those funds to settle the final contract. That's why we're using our fund balance. Okay, any further discussion on that issue? Thank you, Mr. St. Hilario. Madam Clerk, item 29, please. Excuse me, item 27 was withdrawn from consent. Madam Clerk, item 27, and that would be Mrs. Teicholz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ad hoc report, sewer and water at Danbury Fair Mall. Chairwoman Mary Teicholz called the meeting to order at 5:30 PM on January 24, 2008. In attendance was Councilwoman Colleen Stanley, absent was Councilman Gianna Spizito. Also in attendance were City Engineer Fareed Corey, Corporation Counsel Les Pinter, Phil Buckley, the principal's representative, and ex-officio council members Greg Seaberry and Ben, Ben Chanese. Councilwoman Teicholz stated, the call of the meeting was to get an approval on rerouting the sewer and water lines for a new anchor store, which will be constructed on the former phylene site. Chairwoman Teicholz commented that there was a positive recommendation from the planning commission. Mr. Corey explained the site map of the former phylens, which showed the new building and the existing sewer and water, which ones will be abandoned because of the demolition of the building, and where the new ones will be, and the new building's location. Mr. Corey explained, the existing easements would be abandoned, and the sewer and water rerouted. Council responded that the standard nine steps must be followed in reference to the abandonment and easements. Mr. Buckley said that there would be no increase in the footprint of the store, or increase in parking. There will be an exchange of hydrants all around the store, but no increase or decrease in the number. It is to be a two-phase procedure. The tenant has to have their site plan approved, and go before the EIC. Councilwoman Teicholz asked if lowering the property 12 feet would cause flooding. Mr. Corey replied that it would not, and that there is a plan in place to clean the ponds, because the ponds have not been maintained. The ponds will generate the same amount of water. The metering will be controlled by the DEP. Councilman Seaberry asked if the ponds could be extended. Mr. Buckley said the ponds are designed to flood. Mr. Seaberry didn't know that there was a maintenance system in place, and Mr. Buckley stated it would be improved and maintained like it was designed to do. Councilwoman Stanley moved the committee, approved the modifications of the existing water and sewer services, and improvements at the Danbury Mall, following the eight steps, with a ninth step to release existing easements. Motion passed unanimously. Councilwoman Stanley moved to adjourn at 5:55 PM. Motion passed unanimously. Mary Teicholz, chair.
It's a pleasure, Councilwoman Calvo.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the report and adopt the recommendations of the committee.
It's made and seconded by Councilman Trumbetta. Any discussion about this issue? Mr. Otello?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to the city engineer or the director of public works, please.
Mr. Idrala. And Mr. Corey.
Normally, at this point, I'd be asking for Mr. Buckley, but I don't imagine he's here this evening, unfortunately. The last paragraph, guys, about the pond retention, the second to last paragraph, there's been some concern upstream, that some of this water's backing up and causing some problems, and my question is, because it has been apparent that they haven't been maintaining it as much as they insisted they would back in '84, can you speak a little bit about that, the maintenance program?
Sure, there's, in fact, we were just recently out there, and if you were to go out there, you will see, there is a number of bra crust wears that have all been cleaned up, especially the ones directly behind the parking garage. These are ponds that are set at different elevations. The pond at the lowest elevations get filled up, and then they would, through the bra crest wear, flood into another series of pond. So maintenance is the key, you have to maintain those wears, so the different elevations come into play. The other thing I want to mention to you is, there is, I'm almost positive this, during the original approvals, the design of certain portions of the existing parking lot are actually to flood, to a certain portion, so if you do, if you do see some of those ponds encroaching into the parking lot, they're, they are designed to do that, to a certain degree. So, in our opinion, and I think they have been a little lacking in the maintenance, and I think because they're now under scrutiny to get a permit, what we're actually approving tonight is just the modifications to the water and sewer, there's a full approval process that they have to go through the city's EIC, the planning commission, where we look at all of these new recommendations, all of the new calculations, and recertify, and maybe mandate a little better how the maintenance is to be done. Maybe we attach a bond this time, where if they don't maintain it, we can actually go out there and pull the bond, and have them, have a private contractor maintain it, so. But it's interesting, because as we started to have some discussions with them, all of the bra crest wears have been now cleaned, and if you drive through there, you will see some very large- see some very large, some of them are pre-cast, some of them are cast-in-place concrete wears.
Thank you. Through the chair. Just to continue that, my concern is not how they're retaining water. We know they've got to retain water and the parking lots have got to flood to prevent downtown from flooding. My concern is they're not releasing that water fast enough. That's my concern.
Again, if these ponds were maintained and were working properly, that water that is being backed up should be released at a certain elevation. So, you know, we can make sure that during our approval process on the engineering documents, that we evaluate that one more time.
Good.
And we get certain recertifications that they are operating correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otella. Further discussion about this issue? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Aye, savant, motion carries.